Okay, we're live.
Okay, we'll call the November 20th seat of City Council. The President of the Senate is qualified.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, thank you.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yeah.
Councilmember Conklin.
Here.
Councilmember Missouri. Councilmember Stevenson. Councilmember Brinker.
Here.
Councilmember Morris.
Yep.
Mayor Long.
Here.
Proven in minutes from the November 20th regular meeting.
Move.
Move.
Motion for a second may further comment. Call for the votes.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Public comments, comments from residents, city taxpayers. We have no unfinished business, no new business. Public hearing on the 2024 proposed budget. Purpose of the hearing is to give the public an opportunity to comment, make observations on the recommended budget as reflected in ordinances number 2023-12 and 2023-13. Comments from agents, regulations.
This evening, Lock Haven City Council and the public will hear from the Police Department along with a parking overview from the Chief of Police, the Water Fund, and also the Airport Fund. And each of the managers or foremen of those respective areas are present this evening to talk about some of their accomplishments that they were eager to share with council and the public for this year, and also some of the goals they have for next year. Because I was not here last year, I do want to just speak a little bit about the budget. And certainly, if members of the public have the opportunity to go online and view the budget, I think it's important to review especially some of the statistical information that's in the front. Not too many statistics, so I don't want to scare anybody off. But when we're talking about Lock Haven's median household, the median household income in the city of Lock Haven is about half that of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And it's important to note that about 60% of the eligible people to work in the city of Lock Haven are in fact employed. And that's true in the Commonwealth as well. 60% of state eligible employees work, and that is true in the city. It's just that in the city of Lock Haven, we work just as hard as everyone else in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, but bring home about half as much. So we don't have as much to show for our hard work. And so that makes every penny that's collected by the city of Lock Haven something that's very precious to council and thus to the administration. And we make sure we spend every one of those pennies as wisely as we possibly can. When you look at the General Fund, for example, which is where your taxes go, accounting for wages and benefits of the employees who do the work, the insurances that the city has to have, like property, liability, auto, and accounting for things like utilities, that it also has to pay electric bills, things like that. If you only put those things in the budget and take everything else out, like fuel for the vehicles we drive, there's only $150,000 left. So the budget itself is always very tight. There's very little fluff in anything that we do. And most of what the city accomplishes that you see is through the hard work of those who often get grants for the city. And Coburn Park is a great example where we'll get $1.7 million improvements in that part, and it will cost the city $102,000. So the rest of that is the return of your state and federal tax dollars that you've already paid coming back to this community in the form of grants. So just as a starter, council does keep a pretty good thumb on what happens. They get a statement every month of how much money we've spent and where. And certainly, we tried our best to make sure that we go under every budget that we have. And so with that being said, one of the largest expenses in the city of Lock Haven is public safety and predominantly the Police Department. And the Chief of Police Matt Record is here this evening. If you have your budget book with you, you would turn to page 33, and that is the beginning budget there. Per day, the city spends $5,126 a year this year on police coverage. And the chief is here to talk about some of the accomplishments for this year and goals that they hope to achieve with the resources that you provide next year.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to go over some of the goals and accomplishments for 2023 and discuss my 2024 goals. So this year, I was able to meet with each officer and discuss long-term career interests and goals that they have. This week, the chief of those was able to coordinate the opportunities to get them to some trainings that contain specific goals. I also wanted to increase positive interaction with the public by conducting frequent foot patrols. I'm very happy with the way that that turned out during every special event that we had in the city, the concert series, the downtown street closures, Grove Street concerts, the John. Officers conducted many hours of foot patrol, which led to a lot of positive feedback. The third goal I had was to foster a more positive relationship between business owners and the officers. I wanted to create contact forms for the businesses so the police could obtain information about their security systems and who to contact if somebody in an emergency. I've also had little orange, bright orange, hunter orange cards made up, business card size, for the officers when they're on foot patrol to put into the door slots or mailboxes of the businesses while they're controlling. There was a lot of good feedback on that as well. Number, let's see, number four was to maintain a full complement of officers. Now, that certainly has been a challenge, but a schedule's been created to adjust to 12-hour shifts to allow for 24/7 continued coverage. And while I'm on that topic, I'd like to inform you that the Police Officers Association and the city have signed a memorandum of understanding, and as of January 7th, will be transferring to that 12-hour shift. This schedule will save the city money in overtime and allow for continued 24/7 coverage. The schedule was created with assistance from the officers, and they are excited to get busy with this new schedule. Number five was to continue to search for grant opportunities and alternate funding to purchase equipment, provide training opportunities. I'm happy to report with Abigail Roberts's assistance, because she's fantastic with the District Department, we were able to get $572,000 awarded for radio upgrades. And I will work with and continue to work with Abigail to secure funding for more equipment. We've also worked with Roads to Peace to pay for several training opportunities, and we worked with the District Attorney's Office to offset costs of additional trainings. In 2024, I would like to continue to try and find funding for training. I'd also like to explore funding sources for equipment. We're getting to the end life cycle of the Tazbigs, and they're not cheap. So we're going to start looking for funding to start replacing those. I would also like to explore parking options for downtown and the city of lots. There's a lot of options out there, but they come with a cost. But if there is grant funding in such that we can explore to start looking at different parking options, maybe kiosks, things of that nature. Would like to continue the relationship between the public, the schools, business owners, by participating in events and having a positive presence. I was very happy with the way it turned out last year. And the final goal for 2024 is I'd like to reestablish a police relations committee, which consists of officers, members of council, the city manager, and the mayor. I think that started out very positive, and I think that's something that we should look at getting back into. Thank you very much.
Chief, you know, I'm downtown a lot, and I contested that the presence down during the concerts and so on wasn't increased this year, and it was nice seeing you down there.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone have any questions or comments for the chief?
Under court time and overtime wages, that one is the same thing or is that additional to overtime court time?
Court time is separate.
Is separate?
Yes.
So they can expect. Chief said the overtime, the 12-hour shift, is that reflected in this budget?
Yes.
Because it actually is more than what it was last year projected. That's why I was asking, if we're going to save money on overtime, I can't see it here.
It is more but fewer hours because they do have the arbitration rate increase of 3% next year.
So safe from what it was going to be.
Right.
Okay. Are they using their physical fitness memberships? Is everybody participating or just a few that want to, and those are the ones that we pay for?
Yes, sir.
What are the other ones doing anything? Or does that?
They're on their own.
Work at home?
Work out at home. I know Sergeant Bramley, he's very, very involved in defensive training and jiu-jitsu. And he's consistently going to gyms and things like that. And I know that some of the other officers also participated in some of those trainings with him or exercised.
I think it's money well spent. I just wanted to make sure we were giving it to everybody that, you know, wanted to do it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Should put them through a Pacer test that we do at the high school and stuff. They only do the beginning and the end, a pre and post test. Any more comments or questions for the chief? When's the 24 to 12 and 12?
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention it. That will be taking effect January 7th is the last day of this.
Right. I mean, are they going to be on 7 to?
Oh, I'm sorry, 7 a.m. to 7 p.m. and 7 p.m. to 7 a.m. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
How does that affect our shift differential and doing that? Or did you negotiate that separately differently, too?
Right, that's in the MOU. The six, or sorry, 7 p.m. to 7 a.m. receives shift differential, whereas the day shift, so to speak, 7 a.m. to 7 p.m. does not receive it.
Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Parking overview, did you want to go over more of that or?
I would say one thing that, when it comes to parking, it's obviously pretty consistent. We did put in some areas that, again, insistently expired meter on-street is number one ticket issued a year. Expired meter off-street in the parking lots is the next. And then the no parking 12:30 a.m. to 7:30 a.m. is the third. We had looked at in the past and priced updating parking meter heads to receive credit card and cash. Just to do one block of Main Street was $28,000. So that's kind of cost prohibitive to do that. Plus, with a credit card, you have to pay. Each of those heads has a monthly fee for the communication fee of about $4. So it does make multi-space parking kiosk much more affordable, which are about $5,000 apiece, to start looking at that. And that's one of the goals that the chief has, is to kind of examine that as an opportunity and see if that may be something to look into for the future in the city.
See, I know Bloomsburg and State College, they just do, just like when you go on vacation, you just use the app.
Right. Yeah. You can also be in a store shopping downtown and get an alert that your meter's going to expire at time, breaking your code.
Yeah. I was talking to some people about that. Some of the people don't like, and they didn't want to do that. They like the nickels and the dimes because it costs them more with the app. So maybe we could do a hybrid version, meaning like downtown, we still do the nickels and dimes and the quarters, but on the side streets, we could go to the hybrid, and then we can offer them more time for that. That way, we'd still have the parts from all the old ones, and we can recycle them onto Main Street. You know, like do a transitional phase of that.
Right, I agree. I think that would be definitely an option we could look into. The only thing we're going to run into, I think, in time is the getting the parts and pieces because they're in pieces at this point to maintain those current.
Right. And that's what I'm saying, if we could take the side street ones, use their parts for the Main Street for a while, like a transitional phase to it, that might be something to consider. Anything else?
We did still have one that Mr. Morris used to use from time to time that you still had to turn the knob on.
Has his name on it, doesn't it?
I believe so. He bought it.
Did he get it? Did he buy it from us?
Well, over time, in daily payments.
Maybe it could be a retirement gift or something. Okay, anything else? On work, you know?
Not that I have here on.
Okay. Water fund?
Water fund begins on page 48 of your book. The goals and objectives are listed on page 50. Because the city is not able to get a tariff increase that would be effective until 2025 from the PUC, the city will have to operate the fund in deficiency this year until you are able to raise increase or increase the price. The debt service that is listed in the city's budget is the maximum debt service. Some of those notes, like the 2023, have not yet been drawn. So you may see significant reduction in some of that debt service depending on when the loans are actually drawn, because that'll have an impact on the amount of interest and principal. So Hunter Stover, Anthony Stopper, the Director of Public Works, is here, and Hunter Stover, the Water Foreman. And Hunter, if you want to go over your accomplishments for this year and some goals for next year?
Okay, so the tanks were done on a new road to start. They regulated us, we have to find OLED in the system, so we've been working on that along with assessing the inventory lines for future line repairs and system-wide leak detection. By the end of the year, we'll be right around 100 leak specs since the start of January. 24 goals, investigate the line improvements in the pressure regulators and the pump stations, update some of that. Complete system inspection for lead services, that'll be continued until it has to be done early October. Continue assessing for replacements and update meters and radio reads so that'll cut down the time it takes to reef them. And continue system-wide leak detection for water loss in system, which since we started all this, I've been in contact with plenty, we're down like 400,000 gallons a day since the whole water shortage happened. That's all I had to say.
So that brings us to what's our usage now? I mean, last I heard, going high to 2.7 was 2.8, last I went down to 1.8, which was before he went on vacation last week. It were like three, right?
Over three.
Two, three, three.
Yeah.
And it's a contribution of leak prepared and asking about industry, everybody else's usage. So we're using the day bomb with right now to do all leak detecting. He's been away the last two weeks on a different system, so I haven't heard him use it from back yet. But when he gets back, he has to do, like, leave all going down, bunch of transmission mains, and then we should be good.
So is our usage going down as well?
Yeah, yeah.
Towards it, because I wasn't sure.
Yeah, once we see the next on-site, I can work with a volume of the line office and, you know, prepare.
We will. We do have some industries. It's a double-edged sword. When major consumers reduce consumption, your revenue goes down, too. But part of this year's budget was based on conversations with First Quality and their intent to every day draw an extra 300,000 gallons from the system, 300,000 gallons. That didn't ever come to fruition as a complete package. There are days that they would go up and days they wouldn't. They've made commitments to major cutbacks and have already cut back their water consumption at least for the last month, and they will actually have a period of time where they're going to be reusing water to have basically no real draw from the system. And that should be probably by the end of November. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's 27, so we're pretty close, yeah.
Yeah. So they should be coming online with that plan of theirs, which will help significantly reduce draw on the system and should help the reservoirs recharge a little bit more. Obviously, you had an update on the emergency water supply last week. The city will be tapping the 2022 note that you have, 2022C, which was originally for the permanent installation of the wells, and that will be used for the emergency water supply to be reimbursed by Penn Vest when you go likely next, the end of next year, to Penn Vest for application. So there will be a year that that money will be out. You will have an interest to pay on that. Those interest payments will be sent to the Filtration Authority for partial reimbursement of that from Suburban's Flow. And then once Penn Vest is initiated, you'll receive that money back, and then that money will end up going out again in order to make the wells permanent. So it's a unusual thing that you happen to have the wells at this time. Again, with the Water Fund, as with the General Fund, if you take out absolutely everything out of the fund except for wages, benefits, property, liability, insurance, and utility payments and software fees, you still have a deficient fund of $479,000, which will have to be carried cash-wise by another fund's cash before you get to PUC.
Questions for Hunter or Tony or Greg, anyone?
Wouldn't you anticipate making the filings?
Well, now that the budget's over, this week, I will get the rest of the paperwork into Raff Tellis and Eckert Siemens, and then they'll be able to give me an estimate on when they be prepared to file. They are waiting on me at this one.
Our 2022 A bond that ends next year, is that that one to do or is that looping at one and a half?
Yeah, that, when we draw down the Penn Vest money, that goes into a separate account that it remains in. It's a separate checking account, and so that's the money that'll be used to make that payment.
So that money's there.
Right.
I see we're ending two next year. We've already ended two, three.
Yeah, and we ended, with the 2023 note, we ended two others as well.
Yes.
Anyone else have questions or? Other questions? Airport fund?
Airport fund, if you, that begins on page 59. The actual fund numbers start on page 64. On page 63, you can see the user fees that are being charged for things like tie-down hangar rental and office space. And the police even rent an office space down there for use. But a new line item that will be added this year is through the fence charge, and that is something that the Airport Advisory Committee had a meeting with the FAA and BOA. And we do have six different entities that, according to the BOA, were to have been charged for through-the-fence operation at the airport. And so the FAA is requiring that the city begin to collect that. And those entities will be sent the letter hopefully this week, as soon as the solicitor is done with the agreement for the pass-through. And then they'll begin to be charged a monthly rate for having the ability to go through the fence, literally through a gate, to gain access to the airport. So total in rents from the airport then is $156,912 as revenue. And when you take the Airport Fund, like the other funds, and just account for the debt service and wages, benefits, services like auditing and phone, internet, other utilities and insurances, it actually spends all of the money in the Airport Fund and overspends by $14,000. So there obviously does need to be the introduction of some things into that that make it go even more over $14,000. For example, in the amount that I told you, now this amount is in your budget, but the amount I told you, $14,000, we have to add to that because when Doug's truck runs out of fuel, we do actually have to put more fuel in Doug's cloud truck. So that amount will be larger, so we do still have to look at ways to trim more of that because obviously, the General Fund is going to have to carry the Water Fund for $479,000. So there literally is not an extra $14,000 or more. So we will have to find other ways to find greater savings in the Airport Fund. Doug is here, and Julia is handy sidekick. And Doug's been with the airport since we've been with the airport. So Doug, do you want to give an update on what's going on down there?
Well, basically, all the goals that we had planned for this year did not happen. It's no fault of anybody, just that we lost our aviation engineer. So we had to put our P's out and get a new and current firm. So I shoved everything, you know, back about six months. I am happy to report, though, the Hangar 1, Hangar 2 door project is moving forward pretty much at a fast pace right now. One more B tomorrow is Zoom. The score's engineering tweaks, but after that, I guess, the way engineers talking, 68 weeks leave time, we'll have a new door on Hangar 1, blue construction. So that should be done this winter. Hangar 2, they're going to wait till spring just because the employees are in there and the heat loss. So that's pretty much it, but the other projects are self-serve fuel and upgrade the existing water station we have down there and the blacktop, the access road into the airport. So, but the secret is, I think we do need to get the self-serve fuel in there, and that way it's. And that way, it's twenty four seven, doesn't have to be staffed, generate revenue with that self serve. This winter, we did trim back the hours at the airport. Uh weekend hours are gonna be ten to two. Uh we'll take a look at that come April and then once it gets later warmer out, actively you should pick up and we'll readjust that.
Any questions for Doug?
The airport projects are paid for from the twenty twenty one B borrowing that you already did. So the projects Doug's talking about, um you do already have the the funds on hand for the city share. And in our last conversation with the Bureau of Aviation, they're still trying to determine how much of the self fuel they will cover. Initially, they were going to cover the lion's share of it. Um they're really trying to determine what percent and what pool of funds they will use to cover that. So we don't know how much yet they're going to cover that, but it is something that Nick, our engineer, um is communicating with them regularly about.
How are um how are the talks going with the pilots group down there? Have started?
Uh we met last month. We haven't um met again this month. And probably um I had sent a email to Alan, probably in the new year. Um would like to meet again with them and then um with some other interested parties after that.
Questions for Doug? Anyone? Here, I'm sure there's. Don't you go ahead.
I have some comments, but I'll hand it out because it's not that you expect the actual budget number. It's just back to essentially taking the under narrative on the budget.
Thank you. You want to step there, sorry?
Yeah.
I think this year with several statements that are in the narrative in the budget, they are that the airport's had a loss every year for thirty six years except for four years. Since nineteen eighty four, the city spent three million eight hundred forty two thousand and more on tax dollars to subsidize airport operations for ninety eight thousand dollars a year. And in the last ten years, that amount jumped to about a hundred and ninety thousand a year. Um I don't believe those statements are true. Begin with the last statement, it's based on the operating loss each year for the years twenty thirteen and twenty twenty two have shown in the city's annual audit and that's basically on page, the numbers that are referring to that are on page fifty nine in the budget in the table. And uh but what's not explained is that the audit figures include depreciation in your annual expenses and that range from a hundred and sixty one thousand seven hundred and seventy six dollars to two hundred and nine thousand sixty five dollars a year. The depreciation is a number that's on paper, so it's not paid in cash, so there the city has never paid for the depreciation out of pocket, which is included into one million nine hundred thousand dollar figure. Depreciation for those years totaled a million five hundred ninety five thousand two hundred and seventy eight dollars when you take that away from the total. The balance, which is the actual total loss, is three hundred and thirty two thousand one hundred and seventy three dollars or thirty three thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars per year, not a hundred and ninety thousand. With respect to the statement number one in my list, the airport has shown a loss every year, check four. That's apparently based on the chart on page fifty nine in the budget, which shows an annual loss and an income by year from nineteen eighty four to twenty twenty two. So the total net loss is three point eight million dollars. The source to the data are listed in prior budgets or annual audit, having many of those preparation, most of the budgets have recited. That statement concerned me, so I reviewed a number of past budgets that I had and found that there are some erroneous numbers shown for several years. For example, the year nineteen eighty eight to ninety one show losses of pretty significant numbers, over a hundred thousand dollars each. But those numbers are actually a total revenue for those years as shown in subsequent budgets. And each of those years actually had net income ranging from twenty two thousand dollars in one year to seventy one thousand in another. Several years showed net income as losses, apparently due to the misunderstanding of the sign convention in the computer program at the time which showed revenues as a negative number. The years four thousand and six to twenty twenty two show losses that reported in the annual audit, but as noted earlier, these numbers include depreciation, which is not paid. I deduct the actual depreciation where that number's available and using, that's a little one hundred and eighty thousand dollars for years where it's standard was not available. Or correct end of year numbers and net income losses were generated and resulting losses, that picture changed to what I am listed at the bottom of the page. For the total period, there were nineteen years of net income and seventeen of net loss. So it wasn't only four years of net of net income. With respect to your statement that since nineteen uh statement number two, the city spent three million eight hundred forty two thousand dollars to subsidize airport operations for ninety eight thousand dollars a year. That's also based on the table on page fifty nine. And after inserting corrected numbers from the budget book and deducting depreciation from the audit data, I believe in total for those years, exactly just a hundred and three hundred thousand dollars. The airport committee would like to discuss those numbers, I'd be glad to do that.
Certainly, certainly something that we should look at. Uh the airport committee can go through that and check and verify if that's nice.
Yeah, the committee wants to meet with the former city manager. They certainly can. That's their decision.
Either way, it's still, there's still some loss. We need to figure out how to how to handle that going forward, but appreciate that.
I have a few other questions, by any?
Yes, sir.
My name's Alan Yul. Um I'm a tenant at the airport with uh two aircraft and I also am property manager here. Again, I am part of the organization. It's an informal organization that's trying to step forward, work with the city, help help find a solution to this problem. We're hoping to keep working. Uh we had a meeting set up for December thirteenth. I understand uh Mr. Wilson emailed me and said that that wasn't worked out after all. We are anxious to continue working with the situation. We've got a number of questions we still need to resolve. We've got a uh a draft of a proposal we're working on right now to hopefully sit down with the county commissioners at some time soon and start reviewing this move forward, uh put it directionally. We are very concerned about the airport, however. Uh I do not deny that it appears that the airport finances are very thin. Uh when we take a look at it, there are a lot of things that we've identified there that could concern us and I'm not gonna go into a great deal on most of those tonight. Uh but some of those things do need to be addressed. As far as uh moving forward, in uh bridge, I took a window on sales on a couple of things, the depreciation, depreciation there was a big part of my concern. I agree, it does appear that depreciation is being included in the loss here. Uh depreciation is extremely important to consider when they're talking, when we're talking about uh depreciation of a new roof that goes on the building. You need to be putting money in the bank. It's a one, three years from now, you can put a new roof on that. Uh but in terms of cash loss, unless you're putting putting money into it, that's not a cash loss. Uh so again, we effectively have used a depreciation that is reflected in cash loss there. Um some of the other areas we have concerns, uh when we go through the report that Ms. Wilson prepared, it does take a look at the fuel sales. Uh when we go down through, we indicated uh net fuel revenue is only around twenty five thousand dollars per year. Uh we're very concerned with that. And I'll look at the budget for this year. It shows twenty thousand dollar revenue for a hundred low lead and one thousand dollar revenue for jet A. I don't see any expenditures for replenishing the soft fuel. That's a great concern. Like, anyone that knows anything about a retail business, you have to buy in before you can be able to sell. Uh last year, we sold forty thousand dollars worth of revenue, forty thousand dollars worth of jet A. This year, fifty thousand dollars worth of jet A and that was due to uh D C N R spraying contracts. We understand that D C N R is planning on spraying again this year and the next coming couple of years. Again, with regard to the hundred low lead, if you're not planning on purchasing a hundred low lead itself, that makes it difficult for the airport. Uh again, the reused hours and everything. I understand the budget, I understand the concern, I understand the difficulty that having employees sitting there for uh five, six hours on a Saturday to fill a couple of airplanes. But when we don't have any fuel available, it makes the airport less attractive, now customers start fleeing even more. So we need to keep the airport an attractive place. Uh so I guess my question would be first off there, with regard to the budget. I said, I see one thousand dollars of revenue for jet A and twenty thousand dollars for low lead or hundred low lead. Uh is there, are there plans to purchase uh fuel this year?
Well, right now, again, um there is no fuel accounted for in the budget and the budget for next year is still overdrawn twenty thousand dollars. So in order to purchase fuel, somebody has to pay for that. And it can't be the airport because the airport will have the negative twenty thousand dollars. So that's a decision for council to decide if they want to use another fund's resources, in essence, to let this fund go into the negative more and spend that cash because that cash is somebody's cash, but it won't be the airport airport fund's cash. That is to say, if taxpayer dollars will be used to buy one hundred low lead so that people can fuel up their planes at the airport, that's something the council has to determine. But they can't add it to this budget and make this budget negative. It would have to go into the general fund, which does have a department for four forty. So but that is empty now because everything was moved here. Because again, the general fund has to carry the deficiency for the water fund this year, which will be half a million dollars.
My concern here is uh that when we look at last year's budget again, last year's budget, we're going fifty thousand dollars for jet A and that was a hundred and twelve thousand dollars for a hundred low lead. The purchase price, I don't have that properly, but I believe it was the main rule, seventy nine thousand dollars. So again, we purchase it, we sell it. It's not a net loss. When you put that in into budget, if you show it was paying eight thousand dollars to purchase fuel and that here's our anticipated sale of it, and the budget isn't losing it. So regardless, I I do have a concern there. We need fuel at the airport to keep customers coming in, to keep our tenants in the hangers. Uh people aren't gonna come in and take space in a hangar, they're gonna rent a hangar door if they can't buy fuel here. Again, I I understand your finances too. I'm not disputing that and I understand it's difficult. We want to work with the airport, or I'm sorry, with the city to improve the airport situation and find a long term solution. But at times, it kind of rang me as mine, the comic I saw with the board table set up on the end of the ship and the board saying, we don't understand. We've made cut after cut and we're still not knowing faster. And a view shows the ship that's cutting in half, only half the ship there and one guy alone. We've got to be able to keep the airport attractive, keep bringing people in. Some of the other things that I've got very concerned with here, again, uh employee times. This is it. I I don't dispute one bit that employee, having an employee sit there on Saturday is hard. Uh sometimes he sits there from ten o'clock in the morning till four o'clock in the afternoon and doesn't sell much fuel. One of my concerns is we have to take a look at that and smartly. Uh we seem to say we're cutting weekends hours out, no one's gonna be there on the weekend. Uh I guess I have to ask Doug for confirmation, but I suspect weekends is probably one of your better times for selling fuel. We might be better off to cut uh Monday and Tuesday hour, we cut hours somewhere else so we can keep someone there on the weekends. And I realize that also that comes down to management of employees and it makes their scheduling difficult. But we need to think about when people buy fuel and make it attractive. There are awful lot of people that don't buy fuel here because they don't know if someone's gonna be here to uh pump the fuel. Uh on that note, I guess you did explain a little bit there about a little bit more clarity on the uh hundred, on the uh fuel self serve. It sounds as if you are moving forward with that. I see you have two hundred thousand dollars budgeted and uh my correct understanding that uh that's one hundred thousand dollars for a note that you already taken out and anticipating one hundred thousand dollars from the Bureau of Aviation and FAA.
Right now, that's a best guess because we don't know from the BOA how much they're gonna fund, but it is uh listed in the budget.
And my understanding.
How do you see um, I mentioned about the self serve fuel, how do you see that affecting things? How do you see the self serve of fuel affecting things?
Yeah, I think self serve fuel will be huge impact. Uh first off, particularly we keep attractive fuel prices, pilots know that they can come in at any time and get fuel. I've witnessed many pilots that have been here and can I get fuel and no one here. You can either fly down to this account where they've got self self serve or you can dial them up right there and pay a thirty dollar call fee. Uh so you will sell more fuel. And secondly, as I mentioned, I like the idea of having people have the airport on the weekends, having welcoming environment. But I recognize from the from the financial bottom line, it doesn't make sense to have an employee there from ten o'clock in the morning to four o'clock in the afternoon, sell a little bit of fuel. Generally speaking, when you do that, all of the fuel, all the profits from that fuel sale on the weekend is going to be absorbed by his his pay. So the self service fuel is huge benefit. A lot of the airports that I've around here are are doing that same.
One more on that subject. You know, as well as I do, as soon as your hours end, half an hour later, somebody comes and and then they want something and then they growl because we're not providing services. If we have posted hours, they know what hours we provide the service for fuel. You can't, it's not a twenty four hour thing. Now, I don't know when the self service system, do you have an estimated time of installation or bid or anything of that? Are you looking at spring?
No.
No, that's been even.
Because we don't know BOAs.
Right.
It's all we have.
Right.
But you're right, that's probably gonna be one of the solutions that we're working toward.
Again, we're glad to work with you.
And as far as jet fuel, as soon as, my opinion is when they're coming to spring, we could possibly buy some then knowing that for sure we're gonna sell it. What if they change their minds and don't come and then we have a big hole of fuel there? So it's just in time purchasing, just like any other business. You buy it when you know you're gonna sell it type thing, so.
Yeah, I agree with you.
You know, there's some options we have that we have to be able to exercise.
Yeah, I agree with that. Well, one of the other things, looking through the budget and things, I didn't see anything for applying for spending any of the F D A entitlement funds. Uh the FAA has a fund where each airport is entitled to a certain amount of funding each year. Uh it's been going on for a number of years. Generally speaking, the city of Lock Haven is programmed for approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in its entitlement. They do require that this money go toward safety enhancements or required safety enhancements first. If you don't have any violate, safety violations, you can use it for any infrastructure. Uh this is relatively easy money to spend. Uh looking back through and talking with the gentleman, it does not appear that the city took advantage of this in the past years. And I didn't know uh Mr. Wilson, if you have any plans to apply for that or use that funding this year?
We do actually use that funding when we do have capital projects. Uh like the update to the basic A W O S is part of that, but um we didn't do any capital projects. So no, we didn't get any money because we didn't have anything to spend it on. Um they don't just give it to you to run your airport. So when we do have projects, that is part of the conversation with BOA, is where these different pools of money to help us come from.
So in recent years, though, there were a couple of years where we didn't apply for that money to apply and we do, we've been looking for the basic A W O S for a number of years.
Right.
So is that something that uh we'll be, we can anticipate, we'll be applying to that fund, we apply to put toward the basic A W O S?
Well, we've been trying to do the basic A W O S for several years. It's the BOA who doesn't release the money to us, not the other way around. So this year, we finally have um pinned them down that we know what we're going to do with the upgrade to the basic A W O S. We still have not gotten the money from them, but we do have an engineer who's working with them on that. But just because they say the funds are available does not mean they cut us a check. Um the only check they've ever actually cut us is the thirty two thousand dollars from um the American Rescue Plan for offsetting wages. Um those just come for two years in a row, but other than that, we have had self fuel on since rich with the city manager. So these plans that are in there, uh when we meet with the BOA, I think it lasts two years. Um in those meetings, they just changed the dates on those things and marked them back later in time. It's not because we're not ready to move forward, it's because they just changed the dates um and don't move forward with that. At the same time, they took projects that aren't supposed to happen for, I think on our plan, it was two more years from now and they did those uh what, two years ago, the remarking of the runway. Now, they paid for all of that. We didn't pay for any of that. They paid for a hundred percent of that. But in part, that would have been from that money as well that you're talking about.
Okay, regardless, my concern is that uh it does appear that in recent years, there's funding that we're entitled to, that we're not entitled to. So I would like to, going forward, look, would like to see it again, maybe have her to use that funding. And you're right, they don't just write you a check. You have to put together a project, present it to them, put it out for bid and then when it's. And you're right, they don't just write you a check, you have to put together a project, present it to them, put it out for bid, and then when it's built, you pay the developer. A couple of questions. So those are most, uh, most of the largest items, uh, one of the, oh, one last question I have. Looking through the budget, you made a reference to the space used by the police standing there. I've not been able to find any place in the public compliance to where there's any early coming. And everything I can see, it does appear that they're paying for that space.
That's untrue, they are paying for that space, it's in the general fund budget, and it's listed in the police department.
Okay, but where does it come into the, uh, the airport, like you go, that's where I couldn't find.
In the hangar one rent, actually, it comes in as property leases.
Uh, I'd ask if you can give me some more information, that could be information that I found, I couldn't find anything on that.
Sure, I'll be happy to show you that, thank you.
Okay, I appreciate that. They said, uh, I don't want to be argumental, we want to work with the city here. And they said, uh, we feel the airport is a huge regional benefit. When, and when there is a loss, I agree, why should the airport be paying the entire, or here to work with? Uh, we do look forward to picking things back up after the new year with the airport, the airport planning committee, and would also like to set up a joint meeting to talk about, uh, with the R V A, the F A, and activities, and come on the county commission, if they would like to be a part of that meeting. Thank you, your time.
Thank you.
I remember us getting a list of how many flights we have out.
Mm-hmm.
Just like in COVID with restaurants, things have changed, a lot of restaurants aren't open on Monday or on Tuesday, um, for whatever reason, no costs or whatever, I know some restaurants don't have dinner anymore. So you brought up a good point about the weekends, we have a list of when most of our flights or our sales of fuel are, as well. You know, so, you know, so if, if majority of our flights are on the weekends, we should service them. If it's not on Monday, when flights are going out, or a Tuesday, or a Thursday, um, that, that might be something to look in our data, that would be excellent for that.
For fuel sales, we'd have to go through the, like, invoices in the system and try to see, um, if we can find a way to pull that out into an Excel to try to sort it, uh, for, like, days that have larger.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, my dad was in sales, and I, I do Monday, he wasn't, knew he wasn't selling anything on Monday. You know, just same with you, you said about, boy, six o'clock, whenever summer time is coming, six guys walk through the door. So I, I, I understand that.
It's very hard to predict, because you can have days down there where it's crystal clear.
Right.
And then when the weather's marginal, you might not have anybody. But when the weather's marginal, you're busy, so.
Yeah.
As far as depending on the weekend, we don't know, it's all weather dependent.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, like I said, more people fly.
Definitely they do.
More, I would assume, but I just don't know, I mean, you guys would know that better than I would. And I mean, if we were going, like, you have winter hours, that makes sense, you know, but other hours that, during the week, that make more sense to cut than other hours. If we are going to be cutting at all, you know, that'd help, help reduce costs.
And that's just, right now, it's winter till spring.
Right.
You know, this is the worst time of the year right now.
Right.
We established the airport committee, that's just not all that long, so, right?
It was during the pandemic.
Right, yeah, I mean, it started to dastardly back then, so we established it last.
I'd say probably in twenty twenty itself.
I think what's going on here is very helpful, but I think having them meet with clients is probably most input in my time of serving, that we had from, uh, outside on, on, uh, operation. You're achieving your time, during your time, but we didn't have people like this coming to the meeting and giving the input, that, that part's very positive, of course. Um, so, uh, it sounds to me like the airport committee is one of those busy things, and should be. Trying to even flesh this all out, how we maintain work. And we do appreciate the input. Because, I wouldn't, I, thirty years ago, but I haven't since, and I'm, apart from an expert on any of this stuff, um, it's good to get the input from people who do it. So.
Councilmember Brinker, this is what you were talking about, right? To the rescue again, this truly.
It's month.
It's month, but that's.
Right.
And I just went two years, two thousand, twenty-two.
Can I ask you just the number of volumes in the party? Is that, is that, is that, uh, should it count?
Well, it's kind of too bold, it's kind of taking off, playware, so.
And so.
It's probably a little bit higher, right, factor that in.
Okay.
So the other sheet, um, that has all the handwriting scribbled on it, uh, that is, um, all of our bills that we have, um, had that, um, that was totaled out, except for in two thousand twenty-three, there's a five thousand, five hundred and seventy that I took off because of the hangar door issue of some motor that was purchased, and it was the wrong motor, whatever, um, different things with that, so there's still a total there, and then the total without that five thousand on the hangar door. In those totals, do not people be into monthly, that is separate, twelve thousand.
Thank you for the info. Councilmember, do you have more questions? Does anyone else have anything on this? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm Ron Rattle, I'm president of Psych Aviation, I'm a pilot, I'm an airplane partner, I'm a hangar gear in Washington. I'm just concerned, actually, of the, uh, abgas purchases. That we don't plan on purchasing, Mr. Wilson may have sounded like he has a convenience of, of pilots, it is a convenience for me to buy my fuel in Lock Haven, and I don't want to fly somewhere else to buy it, but we paid for that service. You know, it just, it concerns me that you're going to cut your nose off to spite your face, it's like, you ran McDonald's and didn't have money to buy hamburgers, you're not going to buy hamburgers, or you're not going to sell hamburgers. You make money on hamburgers, I think we make money on, on abgas, uh, and I think we're just cutting our nose off to spite our face, and we say we're not going to buy fuel, because we have no money to buy fuel. I think the budget would change if you had more fuel to sell. So I hope, I hope it remembers that.
Appreciate that, thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, thank you. And keep in mind, this, tonight is a first reading, this is what this is for, get feedback, get input, so that we can make adjustments for the.
I just want to make one point, from an accounting standpoint, and from a budget standpoint, I understand what you're saying about depreciation, but you're not suggesting that depreciation shouldn't be part of the budget process, and shouldn't be part of the accounting standards, because every, every, every state and local and federal agency that deals with, with taxes would suggest to you otherwise.
Thank you. Anything else? So that fell under comments of council?
Yes, I'm sorry, I, it was late getting there.
That's okay.
I was late getting there.
That's all right, that's all right, no, it's down there. Um, thank you for the input, uh, as I said, this is first reading, um, there's time to make adjustments to things, uh, and we appreciate the input on this. Um, now, that should be. Any other members of council have any comments? All right, seventy, consideration ordinance number twenty-two-three dash twelve, adopting the twenty-twenty-four budget first reading.
This is on page eighteen of the city budget book, and these are the preliminary numbers, obviously subject to change, for the city's major funds in twenty-twenty-four.
Do I have a motion?
I'm moving first reading. Sorry.
So you got the motion, and your second again?
Yeah.
Okay, so you have a motion, then a second? We need a more conversation on it, or are we ready to vote? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson. Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Seven, uh, consideration of ordinance number twenty-two-three dash one-three, setting the twenty-twenty-four real estate millage first reading.
This is page nineteen of the budget book, and this is setting the millage rate, obviously subject to change by council, for twenty-eight mills for general purpose land, and six point one mills for general purpose improvements for the twenty-twenty-four fiscal year.
And how does that differ from the current?
It is the same as the current.
Want to make that?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion? Motion for and a second, any further comments? There will obviously be some changes to things, and that could lead to a change in this year, so. Motion for and a second, call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson. Councilmember Brinker.
Uh, no.
Councilmember Morris. Mayor Long.
Any other, things on the, on the current.
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay, we just had the F Y I reports on the Victoria's, there were fuel phase one updates on there. How close are we to being finished with that?
Uh, the extension that was granted was to the end of January, and so they're still working on the parapet wall up on top. Um, the spillway, the construction work on the spillway, um, has been completed, is that accurate, Tony?
Uh, they're still working on that, uh, I'll force it out there.
Okay.
We still have a bridge access, so parapet walls not full yet.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
You do.
Adjourned, thank you. Thank you, everyone.